All right, it is five o'clock. So we are going to call the Kettas County Public Hospital District number one meeting for June twenty six, twenty twenty five to order. So we have an agenda for tonight. I wanted to add under item seven, education and board reports. The wish of conference that we just returned from that each board member have a few moments just to maybe share some highlights and takeaways from that meeting. And how it impacted them. And then Terry's on the governance board. We're going to give us also a separate little report on what the governance committee had to say that might be of interest to us. So I encourage those two additions if that's okay.
That's great.
And then when ready, I'd entertain a motion for the approval agenda or any other suggestions for additional agenda changes.
Motion to approve the agenda as a minute.
Second by Terry. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I too will vote aye. And is Bob online or anything yet? Okay, so four to zero. So that motion passes. We have a consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion when ready. Motion by Erica.
Second.
Second by Matt. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I too will go aye. No one is opposed. That motion passes. And that brings us to public comment and announces now announcements. If there's anyone here who would like to make a public comment, please identify yourself and we will give you the floor. Anybody online? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to presentations. And that brings us to Tom Dingus of DZA, and he's going to give us a report on our actual audit. Tom, are you available?
I am here. Yes.
And just just note, Bob Davis has run. Go ahead, Tom. It's all yours.
All right. Well, hello, everyone. I'm Tom Dingus from DZA and Daniel's also on the Zoom call and he was the audit manager that led the work from our team as well. So he's he's listening in tonight and met with the finance committee on Tuesday morning. So also presented probably in more, well, not probably did more detail at that particular meeting than probably will this, but I will go through the high points of the audit, the audit results and some financial indicators and some reports with the audit. If I skip over something you have a question about or want to ask a question, please let me know and can talk about anything you would like to talk about. So I'm going to share screen. So there's like a PowerPoint presentation here. And so starting, let me get. And so just DZA CPA firm, we work with about half the public hospital districts and half the critical access hospitals in the state of Washington. Are they over seventy five critical access hospitals? We work with throughout the Western United, Western and Central United States. Focused on healthcare, ninety, ninety-five percent of what we do is healthcare and most of that healthcare is rural healthcare as well. Audits Medicare Medicaid reimbursement and a full array of services of what a healthcare organization would want. Quick introduction. Agenda, three reports, the audited financial statements, a few slides on some key financial indicators, and then a report to the governing board with the key, a few points to share with the board. Quick synopsis is going to be a pleasant audit presentation, you know, no findings, good financial results. So nothing, no, nothing coming up unexpected. Yeah. So moving on. And as I go through this, you should have the reports, the full reports. I will refer to the page numbers of where what slide relates to in the actual audit report. I think you can just follow along with the PowerPoint just as well, but certainly if you have questions.
Tom, can you hold for just, Tom, you hold just one quick second?
Sure.
So we, we, we don't believe we received this report. Where would, where would we look for it?
I would ask somebody on your team, they've been sent. So were they in the packet?
I did not see that. So why don't we just carry on, you know, because it'll be on screen and we can get a copy of the report afterwards. But just so you know, we don't have anything to refer to. So you go to whatever detail you need to.
Oh, sorry about that. I, yeah, I, yeah.
No worries.
Okay. Independent auditors report is it's there's two auditors reports in the, in the audit. It's a, I'm kind of going, it's an unmodified opinion, which means that the financial statements to follow present fairly the financial position and changes in financial position and cash flows of the of the hospital district, what you want and expected to say. So nothing unusual there. There was an accounting change, required accounting change by government accounting standards this year related to compensated absences accounting that the bottom line, it was increased your current liabilities on your balance sheet or statement of financial position related to accrued compensated absence, absences. Past practices was to record a liability for paid time off vacation and the like that would get paid at termination. The new accounting policy requires accrual of any unpaid time off or compensated absences that's earned in a period. And then an estimate of what will actually ultimately be used. So like if you have sick time, it doesn't get paid at termination, but say seventy-five percent of the time it's used. So seventy-five percent of that is, is been earned and was expected to be used. And so that's recorded as a liability. So it didn't change net income this year. It will change it a little bit from year to year as that estimate changes. And also just adding, yeah, good.
That, that change is nationwide, correct? I mean, certainly not just for KBH. That's a new.
It's for, yeah, nationwide for government hospitals.
Okay.
So not, not for profit hospitals with, would still have a different accounting standard. And there are surprisingly, you know, in the big picture, they're pretty similar between not-for-profit and government hospitals, but there's nuances, and this is one of them. Where you would have more liabilities on your balance sheet than a not-for-profit would. Another relates that you'll see later is the subscription based IT arrangements that were government hospitals have those liabilities and related right of use assets on their balance sheet as a not-for-profits don't. So some differences.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then in the statement of financial position or balance sheet, I kind of come back to that with the couple of slides on financial indicators, but you could see your cash and cash equivalents of about six point seven million dollars. And later the slide that'll kind of get that in relation to your operations. In estimated third-party payer settlements of but one with less than one point three million dollar receivable related to the twenty twenty four Medicare cost report. As a critical access hospital, you're paid costs for your inpatient skilled swing bed outpatient, and for the most part, you're, or some part of your rural health clinic services get paid on an interim basis during the year. And at the end of the year, Medicare trues up to what the actual cost was based on a cost report. And so this year it's a receivable from Medicare for about one point two million, one point three million. Does it in receivable or payable? It's not an indicator of good or bad. It's just a true up of the cash flow. If it was a payable, it wouldn't be receivable doesn't mean it's good. A payable doesn't mean it's bad. Just how it trues up. Other numbers you'll see of significance, your cash and question, cash equivalents restricted by bond agreement for capital acquisitions, your project funds related to your building project, the bond proceeds that were unspent as of December thirty first. And then your funded depreciation or reserve by you as the board for capital acquisitions of just a little, a little over thirty nine million dollars set aside. It's going to the key points on that page of the financial statements. And then the liabilities and net physician side, I think, just know that crude compensate number, the prior years were restated as well. So both numbers are about three million dollars, three point two million dollars higher than they have been in the past for that change in accounting policy. Otherwise, not a long-term debt. I have a slide, a couple of slides away to show what that changes right there. Otherwise relatively the same between the years or nothing to point out. And then getting into the statement of revenues, expenses and changes in net position or income statement. Operating results, the top half of the page of the financial statements is net patient service revenue is up eight percent from the prior year with growth. And I think the important relationship to see on this page is that the total operating expenses increased six percent. So revenue increased more than expenses and your operating income differentials more this year than it was in the past. Both very good years, this year even better than the prior year with the six point three million dollars from operating results. And have a slide that shows that in the relative relative to the size of the organization with some comparisons in a few minutes. Then your non-operating results is mostly your investment return on your cash reserves or investment reserves. And then the interest expense on your outstanding debt and to those for the most part.
Anyway, we can expand those numbers because I really
zoom in the, the screen.
Make it bigger, yes.
I would have to zoom in this screen.
Yeah, yeah. Tom, are you able to zoom in a little bit to, because we're having to watch on a big screen. It's like an eye test.
I can see it perfectly well. If I have such a good optometrist.
I'm not. I'm not sure how to do that to a slide.
That helps a little bit. We.
That was, that was Dr. Thomas.
Dr. Thomas helped solve the problem. Carry on, Tom.
Oh, you guys did it on your side. Good, good. That's that's better than me trying to do it on my side. Better results. The next page, and I go to one with even smaller numbers on it. So is the, the statement of cash flow to show up actual cash in and out of the organization, which is a little different than the statement of revenue and expenses because it's on actual cash basis instead of accrual. And I think the two key takeaways is your net cash from operating activities was six point three million. Some collections on accounts receivable from prior years, plus the revenue growth being more than the expense growth. And then the twenty, twenty point seven million dollars paid for new capital acquisitions and financing costs for existing debt and new debt. You see there were some proceeds from issuance of debt this year. So kind of the operations generating positive cash flow and reinvestment in capital assets. And then the notes to the financial statements after that cover three main purposes of who you are as a reporting entity, public hospital district, how you're governed, the services you provide and where relatively straightforward. And then into the next purpose of the summary of significant accounting policies, how different balances and transactions are recorded or recognized in the financial statements. And a good reading on how the financial statements work. And then additional details for significant account balances of what a reader or user of financial statements, somebody that relies on the financial statements would want to know about an organization. And I was just going to hit a couple of those. Long-term debt, just so, and you know this because you get your financial statements on a regular basis, but two million, I mean, ten million dollars of new revenue bonds in twenty twenty four with some other bonds that were issued in twenty twenty two for the hospital project and some existing bonds from two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. And then some lease liabilities related to some buildings that are leased and a little bit of equipment. And then the subscription liabilities related to IT or information technology agreements where you have a non, you can't cancel them. So you do have that obligation. So those are on on recorded as liabilities as well with the, with the corresponding asset. Future debt service on the bonds, you know, about four million in twenty twenty five and kind of let's see how that plays out through the years with the, the debt service on the bonds, just for the commitments related to the financing. And then the lease liability and subscription liability, future obligations as well, just kind of outside of operations that, yeah, the cash flow. And then the net patient service revenue notes on page eight, I mean, note eight. And I always think this one is important because it shows you where your, your revenue, your cash comes from. And Medicare is about thirty-eight percent of your net patient service revenue and Medicaid is about fifteen percent. And then the supplemental payments this year with the SNAP program, safety net program are add to that as well this year. So you get to about fifty-five percent of your revenue is from Medicare and Medicaid, which is largely cost-based. There's a, there's components of it that aren't cost-based, but that's fifty-five percent. So that reliance on those two major government payers, which is in the range of most rural hospitals, less than most critical access hospitals. You do have more in that other third-party payer than a lot of critical access hospitals do. Which for operating margin is a good thing. Yes. Any questions? You know, if kind of going fast and you don't apparently have the rest of the, the reports. So can't have too many questions.
This isn't really a question, more of a comments. And then I guess I'd be curious to hear what what Jason generally has to say. It's looks like our charity care did not jump much twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. That was a concern that there was going to be a big increase on that. Is there, I mean, do we see a big jump in twenty twenty-five?
It jumped a lot from twenty-one through twenty twenty.
Okay, I see. So.
Yeah, we're, we're up by more than double.
There was a jump from twenty-one to twenty-three, but since twenty-three, we've been relatively steady. Fair to say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I, I would think at the level, if there are these significant cuts to Medicaid, make it through. I would think we might see a significant jump in the months and years to follow that change. But, but I, I know more and more people that are going to use it. So carry on, Tom.
All right. So the, the next, the next or the second auditor's report, important report for takeaway is as a public hospital district, we also audit in accordance with government auditing standards and have a report on internal control or financial reporting and compliance. And the main takeaway is important takeaways of this audit report if, is that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or findings reported. So that's important to know that we didn't have any findings and, and good results that I'm sure your finance and accounting team did a good job on that regard. So that what's not there is take away there. It's good. And then we kind of slide into a couple of financial indicators just for kind of comparison to your trends and then also benchmarks of other hospitals, knowing that those benchmarks are at least a year old because they're industry data. They're more meaningful now than they were during the COVID years, when every year was jumping to worse to better and all kinds of other things going on. So they're a little more meaningful. Is your operate, your total margin in twenty twenty-four was five percent compared to three point nine percent and almost five percent in twenty twenty-two. So pretty consistent. Best practice, general guidance is to be in the three to six percent range over time, which is exactly where you're at for building and building reserves and being able to replace capital and serving your community. So good.
So Tom, you're saying that point one percent is not ideal for all Washington hospitals?
No, yeah, that, yeah. And that's a good action, but to elaborate on that, that's the median. So that means lower than one point one percent. Yeah. So.
Yeah, they talked a bit about that at the wish meeting. We just said, there are a lot of hospitals that are in the red.
Yeah. And I, I think that they're thinking that twenty-four was better than twenty-three in the aggregate, but still quite a few in the red.
Yep.
And then operating margin, which for your hospital is fairly similar for the most part, because the only thing that non-operating is your investment return and your interest expense and you don't have a lot of tax, we have really no tax revenue and not much other op, non-operating sources. And so again, kind of probably your goal there is the three to six percent range, maybe a little bit less because you got interest expense that falls in that category. So again, good. And if you go back to that, that's a point eight. That means actually half the hospitals are less than, you know, their operating margin. More than half of the hospitals had a negative operating margin. And then days cash on hand, you know, a measure of your reserves, one hundred, one hundred and sixty-two days, very similar to the prior year. Generally speaking, you want at least ninety in reserves. And then, you know, after that, you want one hundred and eighty and so forth, and where you are in capital projects and you, you have a major capital project going on and you still have one hundred and, one hundred and sixty-two days of operating cash or cash available for whatever you need to use it for. So very solid position. Especially when you layer in that you have a major capital project almost completed. And then the last report are things that you would want to know from your auditors as a governing board. I talked already about that there was an accounting policy change. There are significant estimates and financial statements as a healthcare organization, and particularly as a critical access hospital. The allowance for doubtful accounts and contractual adjustments is always a significant estimate. And then Medicare settlements is also a significant estimate. And you do have that tab plan or other post-employment benefits liability that's on the, is recorded as well. It's significant, but it's, it's actuarially computed, so it doesn't really have much impact. It does have no, it doesn't have any impact on cash flow or really your operational control. No difficulties in performing the audit. That's important takeaway. We do occasionally say we have report that to boards went timely and smoothly. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements that takeaways here, no material audit adjustments, which is an important takeaway of the audit process is that we do in a lot of audits, it's report, make as auditors propose material audit adjustments. When you don't have in a situation like this where we're not posing, that gives you more comfort as a board that you're getting accurate financial information throughout the years and your auditors are not coming in and kind of fixing it after the end of the year. So that's a good takeaway. The uncorrected misstatement relates to that, that under government accounting standards, the foundation should technically be part of your reporting entity and included within the scope of the audit. The foundation does get a separate audit, and that's that the path that I think you've taken for the accountability for the foundation. And almost all foundations are supposed, are related to hospitals are to be included one way or another in hospitals, reporting entities. And we see probably, and this is not the scientific or to, I've proven this, but I'd say about half include the foundation and about half don't. So not a big deal that it's not in there. And in your, and your foundation's case, it's still getting an audit.
So you're saying that this is not something that needs to be changed?
It doesn't need to be changed. I, it's a good question. I, I lean in this case, because it, it, it's a good sized foundation, but it doesn't change the results of what you would think about the hospital district, whether it's included or not included. And it's getting an audit. So there's already that accountability happening. We do run across foundations where, you know, they're not included. And are they ever getting audited and accountability? And I think as a board and management, sometimes you, you just want them in there, even though they're not material, because it adds a level of accountability to the foundation because you have some responsibility to it.
And so. And Jason, you don't see any, you think it's fine as is?
I think it's, it's always worked well. We do do the accountability audit that DZA does separately. I know something we might do is we could share that audit with the board.
All right. So I check. Thank you.
And then the last thing, just to let you as kind of a think where we, where we focus our audit attention doesn't mean anything was wrong. It's really where we look at if something went wrong. What, what, what would matter the most? And so we focus extra audit attention on those. Not because we thought you did anything wrong and definitely we didn't find anything wrong. Or we would have had findings earlier and material audit adjustments I was talking about. So management override of controls is always looked at. And then we look at the patient accounts receivable allowance and the Medicare settlement. You can see that correlates to those significant estimates. And then there was the new accounting standard this year that required additional audit attention. Just more transparency about the audit than anything else. And that's the planned part of the presentation. And like I say, with a little more detail, a little more discussion with the finance committee on Tuesday morning. And I do believe you'll get the reports that someone has them there. They are electronic.
We will get them to everyone, most definitely.
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry about that. Any questions?
For Tom? Anyone else have any questions for Tom?
I don't know if James Souvenant's on, but I just give credit channel to James and accountant. James is very new to his role as controller over the accounting team and he's awesome. Demonstrating having no findings for this audit or district two or district one. So thank you, James, or the foundation. So.
Yeah.
Or Casey. So we do the accounting for a lot of separate entities and we somehow kept them all very straight. And then another just shout out to Tom, he's retiring this year. Tom's done our accounting for quite a few years, not your entire ten years accountant, but fun fact, we were the first hospital for Tom to audit when you went into accounting.
Yeah. Yeah. So that finance committee, when I was right out of college, first one of the first audits I was assigned to was your hospital back in nineteen eighty-six or eighty-seven. Yeah.
Excellent. So.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah.
And, and the board also was going to say thank you to James. I know behind the scene scenes, a lot of work goes into this to make it go so smooth. So Tom, anything else for us today?
Yep, that's, that's what I have today.
Okay, I'd like to thank Tom and Daniel to, you know, for their efforts on this. Appreciate you spending time with us this evening, walking us through the report. Much appreciated.
All right, thank you.
Happy retirement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that concludes the DZA report. We will move on now to department spotlight of women's health clinic. Would anybody like to introduce what's happening here? I'm going to pause that for a second. Do a little motion.
Thank you.
So we heard the, the presentation to DZA on it. Do we have a motion to approve the audit as submitted by?
So moved.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Second by Erica. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye. That motion passes. Thank you for the reminder. Now the spotlight.
I'll introduce Jesse. Jesse is the manager for women's health. So she put together the presentation with help from the team and I'll let her introduce the team members.
Yes, I brought Dr. Johns with me. He's with OBGYN clinic and here today. I brought Jordan. She's a medical assistant. Laura, who's a medical assistant. Penny, who is our full-time clinic nurse and Susan, who's a patient service representative. So.
Welcome.
Someone from each role in the clinic. I'm going to give these to you because I won't have enough time to read them. Every time I practiced, I was on this side. So I'm over here. Okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
You can, or I can advance the slides. Which one? Is it this one?
The silvery one.
One over?
To the left.
Okay. Oh, yeah, that's better than that. There's remote. So I just clicked this here. Oh, that's great. Okay. Yeah, I can hold it. All right. Everyone ready? Okay. Hi, everyone. So my name is Jessie Malanson. I am the manager of KBH Women's Health and KBH Pediatrics. I've been the manager for three years now, but I've been with KBH for a total of five years come September. So when I heard about us doing the women's health spotlight, I was super excited. I have a very passionate team who loves delivering just the best women's healthcare. And so I feel very fortunate to be the one to be speaking on their behalf today. So I wanted to start with a little timeline to bring us to twenty twenty-five. So in two thousand nine is when KBH opened the women's health clinic. And then in two thousand eighteen is when the women's health clinic moved to where it is now in the Medical Arts Center. And twenty twenty-three is when we experienced a provider staffing shortage. And this is not unique to KBH. As we know, fifty-five percent of rural hospitals have shut down their labor, labor and delivery department. There's three reasons for that. Just it's expensive to have four different specialists on twenty-four seven. It's also the return back on labor and delivery isn't very high. And then the demand that we put on our OB GYNs in rural healthcare is a lot. They have to be in clinic while also taking call for the hospital. They're wearing mini hats. And so it can be challenging. And twenty twenty-four is when we started our partnership with OBGYN. OBGYN stands for obstetrics hospital group. They are actually the largest OB GYN hospital group in the nation. They are in over thirty-nine states, have over eighteen hundred physicians working for them and are located in two hundred and ninety hospitals, over two hundred and ninety hospitals. And so OB G, OB G also has the goal of providing consistent, unconditional and quality medical care. So we knew partnering with OBGYN was going to be great for KBH. And twenty twenty-five is when our rotation with OB H really began because at the end of twenty twenty-four is when we. And twenty twenty-five is when our rotation with O B H really began, because at the end of twenty twenty-four is when we hired all three of those physicians. So that's when they started taking three hundred sixty-five days a year, twenty-four seven call and working in the clinic. They work in the clinic, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and are in the O R on Wednesdays. This is our provider team. So on the top, we have Dr. Wagonek and Anna Phillips, who's a physician's assistant. Both of those, uh, providers are K V H employed providers. And then on the bottom there, we have Dr. Tagavilla, Dr. Megan McSorley and Dr. Jonathan Johns. Uh, and those are O B H G providers. And like I said, they work together to provide three hundred sixty-five days a year, twenty-four seven. Uh, coverage for K V H Labor and Delivery Department, G Y N call, and as well working in the clinic and in the O R. This is our administrative team in the clinic. So that's me here on the bottom right. And then these are our three patient service representatives that work up front in the office. So we have Crystal, Cisneros, Yasenia. And then Susan Cutlin. Uh, here is our clinical team. So there on the top left is Penny Oversby. She's our full-time nurse in the clinic. Here we have Maggie Usri, and she's our newest member of the team. She actually works full-time, but she's part-time pediatrics and part-time women's health. And then we have four medical assistants that work with, um, on the team. We have Andrea Colson, Laura Braisi, Jordan Hole, and Hannah Bauer. So this is when I'm going to invite my team to speak, but, um, I really wanted to highlight. All of the roles in the clinic and how important each role is in the clinic for clinic operations. As well as just taking excellent patient care. So I'm going to invite Susan to talk first about the patient service representative role and what she does in the clinic. Sure, if you'd like to, yeah.
A patient service representative. I don't know who came up with that title. Many years back, but I think of it as serving patients representing K V H, not just women's health, but really all of K V H. And I have a few quotes that I collected from P S Rs, um, that I know, um, just to sort of give you an idea of. Their idea of what it's like to be a P S R. We are the face of our clinic. It's a tough job. We are the first face of any clinic. Our job, in addition to administrative duties. Is to help the patient relax and be confident in their place of care. We make the first impression on a patient as they enter the door of our clinic. Our P S Rs are the primary point of contact in the clinic setting. Coordinating a constant flurry of of patient interactions. And administrative tasks to ensure a welcoming, efficient and supportive patient journey. So those were the words of a few P S Rs. And then just really, um, to summarize. Very short, in short, what we do at Women's Health. The position of P S R has over twenty different tasks that we do. Um, and I'm not going to list them because it's a long list, but, um, most many of those we do on a daily basis. Often at the same time, you could find us doing two or three things at the same time. We try to just do one, but sometimes. Other things come up. Um, we are the referral coordinators at Women's Health Insurance E L ability checkers. We schedule G Y N surgeries and C-sections. As well as facilitating insurance prior authorizations. For our surgeries, labs and infusions. So all the P S Rs are doing all of that currently, in addition to the regular stuff. And I would just say that Women's Health P S Rs have incredible support from our clinic. This is why we are able to do what we do.
Thank you. I know that, um, Stacy, maybe you have something to say about this, but the quality of care that people get here is has been sort of uniformly high for many, many years, but it's seemed like the. Uh, the place where patients were were having trouble was in connecting and in phone calls and all that. So but so that. Sort of part of the operation seems to have had the the sort of fastest, uh, improvements, I think, over the last few years. And now it seems to be, I mean, at least, uh, talking to people, it seems to be working pretty well. Uh, Stacy, uh, how do you feel about it?
I I would I would agree with that. I think, um, we're lucky with women's health because they do answer their own phones within the clinic. The volume isn't as overwhelming as our largest family medicine at Ellensburg Clinic. But, um, I do think we've seen a really strong on taking care of our patients, starting with that first phone call.
Yeah, I I appreciate all the work that's gone gone into that and the amount of hires that you've made and I know that it's. It can be tough, but, uh, but yeah, it is the first, uh, point of contact for any patient or potential patient. So to really get that. That working well is is been a great, uh, I think boon to the to the whole operation.
Um, I'm gonna invite Ms. Jordan, uh, to talk about her role as a medical assistant in the Women's Health Clinic.
Hi there. So I thought I'd start off kind of just like how we start our day. Um, that really allows us to function efficiently, uh, right off the bat. Um, we start with, uh, prepping each of our providers' schedule. Um, for O B and G Y N patients, we closely follow the guidelines set by ACOG. Um, O B patients in particular have multiple standards of care at various points throughout their pregnancy. Um, so as M A's, we take pride and diligently preparing for each patient and helping provide necessary information, um, to all of our providers. And then I did kind of bullet point a few of our other, um, responsibilities. Um, like rooming and obtaining patients' vitals, uh, set up and assist with all procedures. Administer injections and medications. Um, we place most lab imaging and pathology orders. Um, and we inform and educate of results. And medication refills and prior authorizations. And we also ensure, uh. Proper paperwork has been completed for inductions, C-sections and G Y N surgeries. Um, so we coordinate really closely with, uh, labor and delivery and pre-op for all of those. And, um, we really just maintain the overall functionality of the clinic, um, including ordering supplies and all the quality controls. So, yeah, thank you.
And then we have Ms. Penny Oversby, who's gonna talk about being a clinic nurse in the Women's Health Clinic. Sure.
How many M A's are on at any given day? Like, how many M A's do we have in the?
Four would be most clinic.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I am one of the, well, main nurses there full-time. Um, so as a nurses, uh, we do all of the triage phone calls that do come in. So, um, we are usually getting back to our patients same day. Uh, any issues that they have, problems that they have, um, we address those that day. Uh, we work really good with our providers on helping them, um, kind of troubleshoot. Now what we for our patients and getting those things, um, done. Uh, we also, I help with referrals, um, so work with the front, um, any incoming referrals from outside clinics, um. Uh, work on those and getting those patients scheduled with either our O B H G providers or one of our other writers, whichever kind of best fits. Um, yeah, um, getting them in. Probably in a timely fashion. Um, working with our M A staff as well. Um, helping them out in any way I can, whether it be, you know, cleaning rooms or rooming patients or really anything. We work really, really good as a as a good group. Um, there really is anything none of us will all do to help each other out. I mean, there's lots of other patient education. We do a lot of patient education. Um. The nurses will see all of our, um, O B patients. Um, they come in, see the nurse first. We go over all their history, um, try to find out if they had any high-risk issues as well. Um, and start the teaching process as well, first trimester teaching and kind of follow that through. We give them educational materials as well. O B books, um, handouts just to kind of get them going.
Yeah, that's a brilliant. Thank you. And then last but not least, Dr. Johns, do you have anything you want to add? About your role in the clinic?
I was probably the last one contacted.
Sorry.
But, um.
You just got here today.
Yeah, glad to address you guys. I've been here now for eleven months and, um, working with all these guys has been actually great. Uh, everything that they say, uh, all vital important parts of us being able to provide the care that we're trying to provide. Um, you know, I don't really need to explain O B G Y N, but we are. Providing, uh, uh, obstacle care. I would say that maybe a quarter to a third of our patients are high risk. So, uh, we're doing a lot of things that, uh, you know, uh, and coordinating with, uh. Uh, groups in Seattle and Tri-Cities and Issaquah and, uh, on a regular basis to provide the care. Because you can have plans to deliver somewhere else, but you live here. And, uh, so, uh, we know that we're the first line of defense as far as that's concerned. So. Obstetrically and doing C-sections, uh, from a gynecologic standpoint, not only, uh, uh, our, uh. Office practice, but also being able to provide, uh, Euro gynecologic, uh, surgery surgeries as well as hysterectomies, as well as. Dealing with ectopic pregnancies, all these different things that, uh. Uh, uh, and pretty much comfortably doing it all, uh, uh, in a minimally invasive fashion, as long as it's, uh, within reason to be performed here. Um, uh, as well as, uh. Working a little bit on, uh, things such as, uh, uh, infertility. We're starting to do a little bit of that. So that we can at least have people worked up before they go to Seattle, things of that nature. So, um. But, uh, uh, I can't say enough about, uh, all of the. Providers in the office as far as these guys. They're the ones that make it run, uh, you know, because we're only there for a third of the time. They're three of us. We're there for a third of the time, and these guys are the glue that makes it, uh, all work and fill in all the cracks. So, uh, uh, you've got a great team, guys.
Dr. Johns, I have a quick question for you. Uh, this is about, I have sort of an inkling of this, but I'd like to get some perspective on the inside. So. Your work with O B H G, how often, like, how often? Or how long is your appointments? Uh, how often do they rotate new people in? Uh, sort of what's the typical experience?
Um, well. I joined O B H G to work here, basically. Um, so, uh, the other two providers were already with O B H G. Um, and, uh. I guess, uh, there there is really just the three of us. That is the kind of the long-term plan. So I think that. From a contract standpoint, uh, I think that you guys have a three-year commitment to O B H G and. The three of us have a three-year commitment, uh, here.
Oh, that's that's great to hear. So that you get that sort of. I mean, you can form, uh, relationships with patients and for the long terms. It's great. All right.
He's originally, I mean, from Yakima, and so a lot of patients actually followed him here. So.
So can I ask one more? So, um, because obviously we're we're gonna run at levy because women's health is like a priority, right? So. Um, with your experience, I've worked in other locations, uh, some bigger, some smaller. Um, what? What do you find that's maybe unique to us or unique to other places that? You know, has allowed us to kind of stay afloat, um, like we have. Um. Or I don't trends or. What, you know, or just the the challenge of keeping a clinic. Open in a very rural area. Any opinion on that as far as, I could, you know, lower valleys had challenges with. You know, um. One of the hospitals down, they're shutting down their O B or women's health and. The overburden in other areas of. Women's care.
Well, I think that, uh, having, uh. First of all. Things that I think that will help. Um, making sure that the community, not just Ellensburg, but. Yeah, you have offices in Cleelum and this whole area, making sure that they know what, uh, uh. Services are available here, because if they assume that it is. You know, the certain war that the services of five years ago are what's here. Well, you know what? We have more than that now. Uh, so, uh, making sure that, uh, people are aware of such things. And you know what? I think that. The continued commitment of the hospital is is probably the, you know, is the going to be the biggest thing. Um, so, uh, you know, you have an incredible facility as far as. You know, the office space itself. Uh, you have a lot of people that have been committed to. Uh, the Women's Health Project here for years. And, uh, so that's. You know, I think that that's most of it. Um, and you know what? Uh, you don't have to worry. The community will keep having babies, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Johns.
I would like to offer up, uh, my testimonial as the presumed lone patient of Women's Health on the board. Um. I, every time I call there, I get some, someone picks up the phone who I can tell is kind, empathetic, committed. And, um, no different when I go in for my appointments and the follow-up tremendous, um. Follow-up I didn't even know I was going to get. Keep calling just to make sure that things are marching along or that I'm aware that I have an appointment to do or. Any of that. It's just been a really tremendous experience. So thank you all very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
I did call itself one time to try to get in for my wife in two thousand and eighteen. I'm just sad that. Um, we were not able to get in. So thank you for everything you do. We we called when my wife got pregnant and we were not able to establish with K V H. Um, so it's like, oh, because they didn't have room.
Yeah, they couldn't take.
Yeah, so I offered her first O B visit in like three months. Uh, wow. So, yeah, thank you, everything you do to provide access to our community.
Okay, the next section here, I just wanted to highlight all of the services that K V H Women's Health provides to the community. So we do obstetric, gynecology, and then if the O B G Y N and the patient decide that surgery is the next on, we do surgeries as well. So obstetrics includes pre-pregnancy concerns, normal pregnancy care, postpartum care. Gynecology could be contraception, breast health, hormonal concerns, osteoporosis, S T Is, well-wormed exams, menstrual problems. Menopause, bladder symptoms, and I'm sure there's even more than that. And then surgeries, and. We do all sorts of different things, um, leaps, hysterosopies, hysterectomies, uh, tubules, so on.
The doc, uh, Dr. Johns referenced, uh, this a minute ago, but I'm not sure who can answer this, but what sort of services do we offer now that we didn't offer? Eight years ago? Something like, uh, there's some specific, a couple of examples of what, uh, is it, uh, the kind of surgeries? Is it, uh, the kind of high-risk patients that we can handle that we couldn't handle? Uh, anybody have any ideas?
Do you have any?
I mean, he's only been here eleven months, so maybe we don't.
Well, I'm.
Adding things already.
Yeah, we've been doing minimally invasive hysterectomies, so a lot of laparoscopic. Uh, surgery that way, prolapse surgeries, and, uh, we've started doing, uh. Evaluations like hyster cell engrams, uh, for infertility patients to make sure that their tubes are open, things of that nature. So. Um, uh, so there's some, there's some things and hopefully some more things on the on the horizon. So. We'll, uh, be doing some more things in the clinic space soon, so.
Great. Thank you.
All right, this next one here is just accomplishments that we've had in twenty twenty-five. So overall patient satisfaction. Um, all the providers that deliver babies at the hospital also provide prenatal care in the clinic. And this hasn't been the same the last few years. So, uh, it's pretty amazing that patients can build those relationships with all of our providers in clinic. And then they know the face that will be delivering their baby when they go to the hospital. Our patient service representatives really try to get our O B patients to meet every provider at least once. So that way it isn't a new face that they're seeing, uh, when they deliver their baby. Uh, this year, we've already had a hundred and four deliveries. Twenty-six of those are C-sections compared to this time last year. We had ninety-five. And twenty-eight C-sections. So our C-section rate has gone down. And our C-section rate is lower than the national average. It's twenty-five percent. National average is thirty-two percent. Uh, we are currently seeing a hundred and ninety-two patients for their prenatal care. Uh, at this moment, and a hundred and forty-five of those patients established in twenty twenty-five. And just to put that in perspective, this includes thirty-one patients that are due in July, twenty-three due in August, and thirty-four in September. And, um, for those of you that don't know, a pregnant person is seen about a minimum of thirteen times throughout their pregnancy in the clinic. And that cadence increases as the due date gets closer. And that cadence increases as the due date gets closer. So the 31 patients due in July will have to be seen four times in June. And then the 23 in August will be seen twice in June and the 34 in September will be seen once in June and so on. So that kind of shows you how many of our clinic visits will be OB visits. And then in the next three months, we have 22 high-risk pregnancies that the, that the providers are managing. Our providers meet on a weekly basis to go over all of our high-risk patients, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, that patients aren't falling through the cracks, to make sure that they're getting what they need. Keeping patients local and meeting the needs of our community. So we've already had 70 GYN surgeries this year. This time last year, we only had 20. So we're having about 14 GYN surgeries a month. That is a need that we are hitting that we weren't doing before. We've already seen 400 new patients this year. This time last year, we had 132. So we're seeing about 80 new patients a month at KBH Women's Health. So that's a lot of people that are coming to us that weren't before. We've also had over 3,200 clinic visits this year, whereas this time last year, we had 2577. So we're even seeing more patients, we're getting more patients into the clinic. And something that I thought was interesting is that patients are traveling to us. We're not only seeing patients that live here in Ellensburg. 26% of our patients live outside of Ellensburg. And of those, 35% live outside of Kynect County. So we have patients that are traveling outside of the county to get their care at KBH Women's Health.
Could some of those be following Dr. Johns to?
Probably, yes, probably. We know one can. And then lastly, we've really developed a seamless partnership with the Fourth Trimester Resource Center. We've increased attendance to the second and third trimester education courses as well as the childbirth series just by talking about it in the clinic. And we've also have a seamless partnership with Family Birthplace. Whenever someone delivers their baby, we get a message to schedule their two and six-week postpartum visits. And those are scheduled before the patient leaves the hospital. So they already know when their postpartum visits are and they don't have to worry about that. Me, myself, I was a patient and I delivered my baby here in February. And I had a wonderful experience at Family Birthplace. Doctor Tagavilla was actually my doctor. And I used all of the resources that KBH has. So I got my prenatal care at KBH Women's Health. I had at least one visit with every provider. And I used all of the resources that the fourth trimester has. I went and got my second trimester education, my third trimester education, went to the childbirth series classes with my husband. We learned a lot and it was overall just such a great experience. And I felt truly cared for, not only as a person, but as a student to be mom, because it was my first. So overall good experience and I'm just happy that we provide this to all the women in the community.
Quick question about last page.
Sure. Yeah.
So the first bold, 104 deliveries, 26 asarians, is 26 a subset of 104?
Twenty-six of those, 26 of.
The 104. Thank you.
Those numbers on the bottom.
Yes.
The number of surgeries, number of new patients.
Yes.
Clinic visits, this is something that is striking across pretty much all our clinics and the hospital and everything. It's just the number of patient encounters have gone up dramatically over the last few years. It just seems like there's endless demand.
Yes.
And services, we're keeping a lot more care local, I think. Yeah, it's hard sometimes to get an appointment, but we're sort of trying. If you look at the numbers, you know, even five years ago compared to the numbers now, it's, it's just gone up so much. Even though the, you know, the population of county is relatively flat. But we just seem to be, there seems to be all this demand out there. And I, I, I think it's great that we're trying our hardest to meet that demand. And we have the numbers to back up that we're seeing many, many more patients. Anyway, I just, those first few bullet points, I think are just a great test, testament to how the whole organization is behind this access, this goal of access. And keeping care local. So anyway, I appreciate that.
Thank you. And here I wanted to highlight some challenges that we've experienced. So patient access for routine well-wormed exams, we are pretty booked out. If a patient calls and wants to see a female provider, it's March 2026. And we know this is a problem. We are actually actively recruiting and trying to hire two APCs for Women's Health. And we believe once those two APCs join the clinic, that that will severely help that. So whether that be a sort of midwife or a physician's assistant or nurse practitioner, we believe that will really help patient access for our just routine well-wormed exams.
Is this for new patients only or for even established?
Patients, it's pretty booked out. Doctor Wagonek sees a lot of OB patients. His primary, that's what he does a lot of. And then our OB-GYNs see a lot of complex GYN problems. And so for the well-wormed exams, it's, it's pretty booked out and Anna's booked out for several months. So we are aware that is an issue and we are, we are actively recruiting and trying to hire two new APCs. So OB-GYN on-call, that is also been a challenge just because they're in the clinic and taking call at the same time. Sometimes they get called to the hospital and they have a full day of clinic. I looked at the numbers this year and 40% of everyone has delivered this year, has delivered between Monday through Friday, between eight to five. So that just shows you how many patients that we have to reschedule for the clinic when someone delivers a baby at the hospital. So our OB-GYNs have to run over to the hospital and sometimes we, you know, we have to juggle and figure it out. But our team is amazing. We have the best teamwork. Everyone comes together when that happens and we figure it out. We have our OB-GYNs and our other providers double booking themselves. We have MAs who are double booking themselves, trying to make it work. We have our nurses that are helping our patient service representatives, deciding who's the most urgent and who can go where. And we really come together and we make it work so patients can be seen in a timely fashion. Behavioral health support, I don't think that's a surprise. We have a lack of therapists here in Ellensburg. And so really if we had a in-clinic behavioral health specialist, that would really help out a lot of the women in our community. And then physical space in the clinic, as you can see, demand is going up, our numbers are going up. And so really just having a bigger space, more exam rooms, more workstations would be really helpful for the future of Women's Health.
What percentage size increase would you say would be appropriate? When you look at forecasting growth, like how, how pinched are we there?
I think the average is usually three exam rooms per provider. And so on a busy day when we have four providers in the clinic, or even if we have five, we have eight and then one procedure room. So it's, it gets tight in there when it's a full busy day and we have all of our providers and we have all our MAs and nurses, it gets a little squishy. So, but we make it work.
Are you on the second floor over there?
We're on the second floor, right above.
Second floor.
Canyon View and.
Use like the therapy.
Yeah, so it's been a challenge since I started three years ago. Physical, we were running out of space then and we're, we're, we're still there, so. But we're making it work with what we got, but it would be, it'd be nice to have a bigger space. Future of Women's Health, so MFM telehealth services. MFM stands for maternal fetal medicine. That is where we send patients that are high-risk. The closest facility is 45 minutes away. So if we could offer this telehealth service to our patients and they don't have to travel or even travel over a mountain pass to get this service, it would be just awesome and so beneficial. Behavioral health, as I talked about in the last slide, that is something if we had like an in-clinic therapist or behavioral health specialist, that would be amazing for a lot of our patients. Insurance also causes barriers to this when going and referring patients out for, for any type of therapy. So having someone in the clinic would be awesome to do that sort of warm handoff. And then lastly, as I mentioned, physical space, it'd be great for the future of Women's Health to have a bigger clinic, so. Why patients choose us? I gave you guys this because I don't know if I have enough time to read every single one. But these are just some comments, some anecdotes from patients that we've seen, talking about how awesome our providers are, how clean the clinic is, how awesome the staff is and how helpful everyone has been. So if you guys, if you want, or if you want, you can read that at your leisure. And then lastly, I just wanted to say thank you and thank you for continuing to support KBH Women's Health and the Labor and Delivery Department, so we can continue to give excellent care to women in the community. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Well, we'd like to really thank you all for coming in and spending your evening. It helps us understand and get to know departments within the facility. So again, thank you and reach out to us if you have any questions that'd be useful to keep to the board. And again, we really appreciate the education.
Yeah, thank you.
And you guys are free to escape before the meeting continues if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we are on to reports and dashboards. So we'll start with Mandy Wilson. She called the officer.
So I apologize, it's been a little busy. And I don't have my notes with me about the dashboard, but if you do have questions, I will do my best to answer them from memory. And I need to get back to you on.
Oh, come on, you've been busy.
Mentioned that we, DNP is here. They arrived yesterday.
In the room right now?
No, we, we offered that they should come and they didn't, they didn't want to come.
Trying to get people to come.
I was trying to drum up participants. But yeah, they, they arrived a surprise visit yesterday. And it seems like a long time ago. We, I was surprised it was a Wednesday. We always think it's Tuesday, but they came and I just, big thanks to the staff and the leaders. Just been doing a phenomenal job, being transparent and collaborative. And I think we're, we're learning a lot and really look forward to the opportunities to improve the commitment. So they'll exit tomorrow.
Give just a short, quick blurb from you and Dove's perspective on how it's going so far.
I think it's going great. They have closed a lot of their findings from the previous survey, which is one of the things they do is they look at what you were, your non-conformities from the previous year and see if you actually corrected them or not. So there's been quite a few they've closed. And then the noteworthy efforts, I think, I, I could share them if you want. The Blue Land Initiative, we've had multiple people, multiple surveyors notice that in there. And, and that comes, has come up actually, I think on every survey we've had where it's been a noteworthy effort. Also facilities for their strong contract management and how they have held some of our, I don't think inspectors is the right word, but they provide testing and maintenance on a lot of our systems and how they have written into some of their contracts that they will correct any findings right in the moment. And that's included in the, what we already pay. So they thought that was just incredible that we had that in there. And, and also with facilities, some of the staff are thinking about how they can save costs with additional certifications and just that. That kind of thinking is really ISO focused. So thinking about organizationally, everyone in the organization, thinking about how we can be more efficient or have cost savings or avoid risk. So that was another one. I don't know if you want to say anything from, I think you're doing great.
It's been a long couple of days. The OR, just to speak to our expansion, SPD, she, the surveyor that I'm, I've been with for the last couple of days is an OR nurse and started as a circulator. So she's very focused in the OR areas and just in awe of really the core. So we keep all of our supplies and having the bin system, she was just flabbergasted by that. SPD, Dave did a phenomenal job. I know it's not shocking the things that he knows and talking through SPD and the processes. It's such a high-risk area when surveyors are here. She didn't have one single concern in any of the OR areas pre-op. Staff did great, but just to speak to our expansion, she was, she was pretty blown away. I tried to tell her, I'm learning this as I've been here a little bit longer, but we don't think we're small. And when you go back into the ORs, you can really, you can feel it, right? It was, it's just stunningly beautiful. And everything that we did, she has five S training and lean training and she's like, it's just perfect. So anyway, money well spent. And so I thought that was really cool for her to speak.
Recorder and some.
I don't know. She was just like, wow, every time she asked a question, she, yeah. The other thing I thought was great, and this wasn't said in the sessions, but just when I was with the surveyor, is to Bonnie's credit, the expiration dates on our materials, anywhere where they stock, they put a red sticker and then they took the date on it of when it's about to expire. And every single place that we went had that system. And so she was just like, wow, it's consistent across the hospital. And she thought that was pretty phenomenal.
That's a pretty typical finding, like anywhere you go.
Yeah.
You have a problem with that. And so. There was another noteworthy effort, where they talked about the residency program in the. Too, they said that's just a phenomenal program that was got flowing. And as far as noteworthy efforts, but they were very complimentary. They also said, gosh, you guys really don't function as a typical critical access hospital. Behave much more like a large acute care hospital. So they're really surprised and impressed by that.
Staff has been very forthcoming and talking to the surveyors. So I think there's been a lot of just feeling of welcoming and not this nervous to talk to them. And DNP is just so nice to work with. And so I do appreciate just the approach, the calmness and asking really good questions. Staff have been speaking absolutely well. Really appreciated that.
Good work.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if I've ever seen people so excited for survey. Are really.
Because we're like five weeks into, they're coming today.
But people are really engaged too. I haven't seen any defensiveness at all and really wanting to learn. And it's wonderful how the surveyors really want to teach us and help us. It's, it's not a gotcha at all. It really feels like we're getting our money's worth too from using this, that DNP ISO, that accreditation system.
I'm excited for these because it's opportunity to get awesome feedback on our operations. Always ask for feedback wherever, wherever we go. And we'll get really good feedback that we can really work with too from them. And they'll provide guidance and recommendations and.
Not consulting, they don't consult.
But they'll refer to the standards and start diving into. And just it's really rewarding being a part of this organization. When you go through these and get that reassurance that we are actually doing really amazing things. Because in the day-to-day, we, well, what kind of trickles uphill is always those things that need help or addressed or issues. So it's just constant that. And this is a time to really celebrate all the great work we do.
Maybe I like what you said, people are excited for it. It just, I mean, people are proud of their work as they should be for them to have you showcase that.
It's been, I think, very, so having findings before and having pain points before and then have them come back and say, yeah, great job. This was hard work that you did over the last year or two and we can close this finding. Cause that's been very reassuring and just.
Satisfying.
Oh, yes, yeah. So it's been a good process. We're excited for tomorrow. They will be here early at 6:30 AM because part of the ISO certification is to survey after hours or if not during normal business hours. Even though it kind of doesn't make sense because hospitals are open 24/7 and like shift changes at seven anyway. But they'll be here extra early tomorrow and then they will also exit by 2:30.
Just in, on the theme of celebrating our successes, they should mention that at the WISHA meeting, we just attended. Kynect Valley Healthcare got the gold award for achievement of quality excellence from WISHA. Not everyone got the gold.
No.
There were some people who did not and we got kicked sand. There was also, I, I should mention that we were nominated for, for a, make sure I get this.
Every day we're.
Nominated for the Rural Quality Everyday Extraordinary Award for our barcode, barcode scanning implementation. And we just, just barely lost out to Summit Pacific Medical Center. I assume as a result of some bribery scandal that will come to light at some point. But fellow sitting, but it was really nice to, to be there and to, to see how well. how well thought of our organization is among, among other, you know, hospital leaders and among the WISHA organizations. So anyway, that was really nice to see and, and I thought I'd mention that here to get it. Get it in the record that other people are recognizing the work we do. Thank you.
I know, I, I, my report is in the packet and I'd love to take questions and I'll try to answer them. That's.
Any hardball questions?
No, but there's a lot of great news and the, the, the things that didn't happen.
Oh, yeah, yes.
This didn't happen, that didn't happen.
Yes. Oh, and we'll tell you, so we're in the process of analyzing the results from the survey on patient safety culture. And so we'll have that data available as part of strategic, which is great. It's exciting. And we, we did get to, I think it was seventy-five point eight percent response rate.
Gold seventy-five.
Did it?
Average, average survey response rates are like thirty-eight percent.
Yeah, I have that.
It's ice cream. I had a question about falls. And I appreciate the kind of narrative and walking through, but so I'm learning something here. It appears as though the sudden case, somebody leaned forward or got dizzy and was assisted to the floor. So they didn't actually fall, but it is counted as a fall.
Yes. The definition of this fall is an unanticipated.
Descent.
Descent. So it doesn't.
Is it really?
Yes. That is the, there are very specific definitions.
So if they call it ahead of time, I've gone down, it's now.
Pulling a popping, yeah.
So now it's not un.
So in the data, though, they do set assisted versus unassisted. So it is called that.
And there are a lot of different ways that you can look at falls data and people do like, and falls with injury, right? And falls without injury. So but it does feel a little bit like a unfair measure, but it's, that's standard.
I think it's still looking at the potential harm. It's about the harm that's, we're trying to avoid more than the actant.
So we should have worried, dizzy people coming to the hospital.
Yes, yes, for sure.
If you avoid sick, sick people. One of the things that, that I'll talk about a little more later, at the WISHA meeting we just attended, one of the things they talked about at, at the presentation was the board's role in equality. And I think that we're doing pretty well on a lot of different things, but I'll, I'll shout, one of the things I learned that was pretty interesting that may, you know, we have this focus, we've had this focus for, for several, several months where we would, we would look at one measure. And so get that, I have some, I mean, they, they have some interesting ideas for how we might sort of package some of that and look at kind of what the problem is, how we're addressing it, what sort of improvements, methods of improvement we have in place. So I think this is something I'll talk again with you sort of one-on-one at one point, but I think that might be a good way to showcase some of the things that we learned about at Q I Council. If we just sort of package it a little differently and, and sort of look at how, what sort of improvement methods we have. For changing those things. Anyway, I'll, I'll give you more detail on that later, but, but I think that would be a really good way to, to kind of put some of this stuff for the full board so they can see all the great work that's done behind the scenes. You know, as you say all the time, we're just seeing sort of the tip of the iceberg. At Q I Council, we're seeing the tip of the iceberg. I think the, the whole board would be really impressed by some of the, some of the improvement processes that are in place. I mean, the fact, probably you all know this by now, but there is a falls committee. You know, where their whole focus is just on preventing falls and looking at, you know, the root causes, analysis of these things and how we can, we can sort of improve things. So there's, there's continuous improvements, but I think, anyway, I won't go on anymore on that.
I'm glad you're excited about it.
Yeah, I'd be excited.
Talk about it.
Anyway, thank you.
One of the things that was mentioned there is Mr., I can't remember his first name, Dio, what was his last name on the?
Oh.
Final, okay, I can't recall. But he had mentioned when there's a report that comes around about patient safety quality, that removing the denominator, and so not a percentage. I mean, it's fine to have in the dashboard, but just saying instead of, we have this list of falls or something, we had two falls, which is something that we've always done is to mention that there are these two falls, so it really individualizes and personalizes it to that particular event. I thought it was really neat that something he was suggesting that that is our culture to.
He mentioned being in an organization where they're like, well, we only had, whatever, it was point five percent of people sort of died as a result of. You know, something we did wrong or something. You're like, well, how many people is that? You know, if you're in a big organization, it's, it's, it might not look bad if you think point five percent, but when you talk about.
Take away that denominator.
Right, the number of people, then it really seems like something, yeah, so that was, that was interesting. Anyway, we, we're, you might get excited about this or you may dread it, but I have some ideas.
Excited.
We'll talk later.
Excellent. Any other questions or anything else for us? Enjoy the six thirty A M.
Same.
Yeah, we are. It's last day. Could do anything.
Before the fall of the day, they're not here right before fourth of July.
At least it's.
Good time. Yeah.
So on to the chief executive officer, Jason.
Yeah, thank you. I had a couple announcements, was gonna call out that we have D N V here, so that's done. And that was it, we got that award, but I did share that with everybody yesterday as well. So congrats, everybody. No surprise that we got it, but we should have the, the other award as well that's coming, maybe next year.
Work on that for you guys next year.
Yeah. I know, it's hard to get on that chair when it's voting, but.
Yeah, whatever it takes.
I should mention there were only five nominations, right? So that's, I mean, it's pretty good to be among just the five places we're nominated.
Finalists. Yeah, I think we nominate ourselves, so.
Listen, that's okay.
But it still sounded.
We responded, we participated.
One hundred percent.
But they, they did show on the screen, you know, what we're nominated for. So I think you guys probably submitted this is a sort of summary slide of what was going on. And so that would, would play over the, the screen for everybody and, and it's impressive, you know, to see that and, and all the people to, to sort of see the great work we're doing. So it's, it's good advertising for us and, and it lets people know, like you said, we, we sort of hit above our, above our kind of weight class.
To add to that too, we were, we're one of the few clinics in our center community that is doing barcode scanning in the clinics. Most places don't do it because it is so complex to figure out and manage.
I think we're the only one in community.
I think you're the only one in community.
Figure it out. Only one or the first, jump it up. Yeah. Can you give me any more questions about my report? But otherwise, we are running a levy, so we're all in. We'll be ramping up in the month of July just to really get the word out and educate the community at any angle or any opportunity that we have to talk to the community. So whenever you're in front of, of community members, please take the opportunity to talk about it. Some comments from others like A W Ph D is you want all these different avenues, not just when you're presenting rotary, but even if you're in faith-based communities or anything, you and us are people who are the most knowledgeable about healthcare operations. We were just at a committee learning how fragile healthcare is, not, not across globally, and that's absolutely here as well. So we are way more educated than the general public on, on healthcare and it's our opportunity to really share the awesome work that we're doing and what this levy can do for, for K V H and for the future of, of healthcare here. I really look at it as an investment into our community, investment in K V H. And it's what attracts people to want to stay here and live here. I just couldn't imagine being one of these other facilities that are truly struggling. So the three pillars that we're running on is for the community to just really wrap their arms around or OB, labor and delivery services. And that'll allow us to take those funds that are currently being subsidized to keep sustainable or that service open to be able to invest that into primary care, specialty care and our general infrastructure, as we just learned from other hospitals there. You know, trying to figure out how they're going to stay open because they haven't invested in their foundational things. Let's be chatting about it in the community. Any questions on my report?
I just want to, and your thanks for Crystal Densley, I really got, I had no member of the school board. And she said that Crystal did an excellent job educating them and, and really making the case, not making the case for why it's important, but just making it obvious why this is needed and how it benefits the community. So anyway, it sounds like she's doing an excellent job.
She's really sharp.
It was doing amazing, yes. And I'll, I'll be getting out with Crystal and others in July to every event that we can, rotaries and stuff to, to attend and speak at. I went and spoke with the Board of County Commissioners last week, and Crystal did, and it went really well. And Corey Grant called me after too and we talked through further in detail.
Any other questions for Jason regarding his report? You're in, we will, unless you have anything else for. Moving on, we have Janine, H R, what do you have for us?
Well, our metrics remain pretty steady with the exception of turnover. We did have a little bit higher turnover in May, and so we did a, a bit of a dive to figure out what was going on there. It was relocation, but eight of the eleven folks left the area. And there's not a lot we can do to really compete with that, but still holding strong in a lot of our, our other areas. We have made a little bit of an adjustment to our recruiting. Our recruiter, Heather Kerwan, has just been rock star. And Kat, who has also done a wonderful job, had no backup for physician recruitment, really. So we made the decision to put the two together and created a deeper bench for physician recruitment and synergy between those two has already been noticeable. So very excited to see them kind of shore up workflows in that area. And then we are looking at a couple of strategies for sourcing. The first one is we retained the Medicus firm. We lost our physician, retained physician recruiter. And I said, well, I've worked with this Medicus firm for years. I've had great success with them. Let's, let's go with them. And then we found out that's exactly who our recruiter went to. So she now works for them. So it was, it was a good move for, for all of the above. And so we are working with them to assist with sourcing. The other thing that we're doing is we have a pretty passive approach right now to sourcing for physicians, what we love when we call post and pray. So we are looking at a sourcing platform that is specific to physician recruitment. It's called Practice Match. And so we are looking for ways to be a little bit more intentional with our efforts, where we post, how we post them and how we get them to come look at our opportunity. And then let our recruiters, you know, work their magic. So we are looking at some strategies with that. And with that, I'll leave it to the board. Do you have any questions?
I think just, just to note that recruitment piece is a huge piece is I think good people attract other good people and good facilities help attract other good facilities. So our, our best recruiters are our people. You know, we post and pray, once, once one of them applies, they get them in the door to really give them that wow experience. We've, I feel like we've been really well lately with that and starting to perfect that. And we've got a ton of ideas to continue to evolve that. So I'm really excited to see how some of these new things that we're trialing, that, that take time. But a huge thing is just good people attract good people. I mean, cardiology is now we're, we're now like denying cardiologists. I mean, we got, now we've got, we've ten, like four, from one, one to four.
You never have to.
I have another one that works here. I'm like, oh, okay. Well, now I have another one going over. Okay. So.
It's the downside of if you build.
So space is always a thing. So that'll be a common theme that you'll hear. I think every, if we had every department come and speak, they would say that space is a factor. So you'll see some of that come out as some of our strategy fighting and what we look to aim towards the future to, to keep expanding and growing and adjusting on. I commend Janine and everybody for the reflection efforts and trying new things.
Well, and Dr. Thomas, I like, he, he had a wonderful idea about, you know, creating sort of an ambassadorship program where our docs are helping us with the face-to-face recruitment with the students and the residents. And so I think on the whole, we're trying to look at long-term strategies for that relationship building. Short-term to find those folks who are looking to, to relocate to our area that we can snag our way and say, hey, what a great opportunity we have here. Hey, do you know about us?
And the seventy-eight students, right?
Yeah.
For the month, I mean, there was a time where we weren't allowing any students to come and reserve. I think that's huge. That just feeds, you know, what I'm doing makes it exciting for those that are helping those students too. So I think it's great, yeah.
It's that relationship building at the earliest level.
Earliest level.
Well, there's some sort of, I don't know what the number is, but a, a large percentage of people, of physicians stay close to where they're educated and trained within some sort of, anyway, it's, so it's really good to get them.
Sounds like Zoe got some nice compliments on her, you know, working with other students and so forth. So it was nice to see that students spoke up and made that clear. So it's great that when they're here, they're being well received.
Yeah, and you know, being a preceptor is kind of tough. I mean, it's a lot of work. So just really making sure we're wrapping our, our supportive arms around our preceptors as well to make sure you've got enough preceptors to handle the students' technical moves and yeah, it's just all the things.
Anything else for us today? All right, moving on, we've got Wayne. I don't, it don't seem on.
Yeah, and I said I'm happy to answer questions too, for his.
Hi Wayne, any thoughts for us on the expansion project update, anything else?
Um, no, everything is pretty simple right now, what you see on the report. So I'll see if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Wayne? So just the, the windows are a little bit of a holdup for the, that we're going to move general surgery into ortho. Well, we did their windows, but what, what's happening there on that? Do you have any thoughts?
Uh, there was, it was kind of a, a perfect storm of stuff. There was some mismeasurements, there was some, the, some definitions as far as the manufacturing of the windows that we had to go back on and get new pricing on and get new quotes as far as installation materials and like, and that's just one of the things that's just kind of grabbed.
Do, do we have an updated timeframe for that or is that still not known and how, when it's going to be done at this point?
Actually, I'm, with D N V being here, I'm going back through my emails right now. And right before I knew you were gonna call my name, I'm, I'm working on finishing out and approving that quote and everything right now. So I'll be sending it out and then they'll be able to give me a lead time as far as manufacturing and scheduling the installations.
Excellent, thank you.
We're not going to move general surgery until we've got that date set. We want to keep that to minimum as much as possible.
And we had somebody in there now, so that there is in person.
The clinic manager is.
It's all being strategized, obviously, how to optimize, make, make it work.
That and Dr. Longo and I, when we first talked about whole process, the building process, he goes, ah, we're not going to move until twenty twenty-seven. And I'm like, no, we're going to get, we're going to be in before the end of the year. So we're thinking September is when ortho might move. And he's like, no, twenty twenty-seven. And I'm like, no, no.
He doesn't stop by his office and want, maybe that's.
Maybe that's why he's hoping he doesn't come on campus. So, so it'll probably happen. General surgery will probably move closer to the end of July, maybe August, and ortho will move on campus in September.
Free a little space on the side of the floor of the back, maybe.
I've got plans and.
Any other questions for Wayne? All right, Wayne, anything else for us?
No, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I'd make a quick note for Rhonda, it's just the Midtown Depot project's doing along, so. And make a quick note for Rhonda, it's just the Midtown Depot project's doing along, so, um, for the, the owner's architect has completed their plans. We're having our, um, architect record just do a quick review before they submit it to DOH.
Okay.
It's coming along.
Excellent. And it said, we're aiming for no later than the December movement. If it all goes smooth, is that the goal?
Hope so, yeah. They've suggested it's early September, but I've said they don't move in December. Yeah. And then it'll be us to move in all the equipment, IT, you know, but so it'll take some time. Okay.
All right. Thanks again, Wayne. Yeah, uh, so we'll move on to operations. Deb?
Um, my report starts on page twenty-five. One of the things I wanna call out is each of the areas on my team have now done their vision statements. So I had brought my vision statement, um, and then we cascaded that down trying to connect them to the overall mission, vision, values, and try to create strategy. And then they're working with their teammates. So you can read those on your own. I thought it was, they did a full exercise the last few months, and so I just wanted to share those with you guys. Uh, we had a Daisy Award winner, um, Paul in critical care. I remember how many years ago, twenty-two or something. I'm sorry.
I was thinking it was closer to the thirty-year mark, but I might be.
Oh, he was twenty-four I was in two thousand and eighty.
He's been here a long time. Uh, so maybe.
Yeah, he was.
Him and Kathy. So anyway, that was, um, really exciting and I, it is gonna go out on social media, I think, when Michelle gets back. Um, we also had a very successful little house in the ORs. Thank you for those who came. We had our first, uh, day where we had our three ORs running and it went fantastic. I said, what was really funny for Amy is she was like, everybody's happy and really excited. They love it. She was just surprised at everyone's reaction because leading up to it, it was a lot of we have the right resources, are we gonna be okay? There's a lot of surgeries on it. I went over there and it was like, we have thirty-two surgeries today. I was like, isn't that exciting? They're like, yes. It was kind of like the anticipation. So that was really cool to see. They had a very successful day. Um, but other than that, I didn't have anything else.
Oh, well, they'd be running three surgeries.
We're s- well, we're starting with one day a month. And then we won't, if we're increasing over the next.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have more surgeons right now.
Right.
Yeah.
But we're adding.
We'll look forward to continuing to get busy as we go through and ramping up and.
Yeah. And I think one of the cool things is too, is that we're able to offer the guy, and so you saw the GYN surgery volume. And so we're able to offer more, but like the time and the OR and these types of times. So there is some flexibility in our schedule. So that we're using it at capacity, but also being able to offer the times for the right surgeons. So some of it is also just operationally being better and more efficient.
Yeah, even, and the searches are so much heavier. And I talked to Dr. Longo and he was in there when when there wasn't anybody else and he got three OR rooms and he was so happy about that. From one to the other, and he really looks forward to, yeah, getting even more in in a day, but the efficiencies of that from beginning and, and go from under.
Yeah.
A lot of ways.
Any questions for Deb? Anything else for us?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chief Officer Rhonda?
Hi, everyone. Um, my report is on page twenty-nine and thirty. And a bit of exciting news for home-based primary care. We have been able to fill our MA position and we have an MA starting in the program on July seventh. Um, yeah, uh, other than that, I don't have any updates, but I'm happy to take questions.
And, and you're content with the, um, the, the the depot opening between September and December. It's all, it feels like it'll, it'll work out and we'll get people moved over from the old clinic into the new space and, um, are we still searching for therapists to fill that space once we open it up, or what's that standard?
Yeah, we did just this week, um, post for a PT and OT positions. Um, and then also we will post for rehab aid to help out. But we'll wait on that one. I think that will be easier to fill, but the OT and PT need a lot of lead time, so, um, we do have those posted.
Excellent.
No applicants yet.
Nope, nope, they'll come, cause we're building it, so they have to come.
Yes.
Um, any other questions for Rhonda? Ron, anything else for us?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Um, Stacy, uh, Chief of Clinic, what do you have for us?
So my report starts on page thirty-one. For the medical assistant apprentices, preceptors are part of the five, so we only have one MA who's willing to precept. So we will only be accepting a line of MA apprenticeship this year. Um, well, for this quarter. Some other things going on, cardiology. We've talked a little bit about the growth in that clinic. We had a lot of displaced patients. We are down to now twenty percent of that list still need to be scheduled. So we've been able to get in probably close to almost four hundred patients that were displaced in the year. So the team is working really hard, really creative ideas. Um, nurse follow-up, phone calls, touching base with patients. Um, some of those patients are holding out because they live in Clealum and they want to be seen in Clealum. And we do have a good population base that is waiting for Dr. Hoppy to start. So we're moving along really well in cardiology. Um, and then I do have, just to give you guys a heads up, we have done some flooring improvements over in the Mac building. We removed a lot of carpeting in the waiting area for dermatology, so that's now tile. The next step is remove the carpeting in rapid access. I think we got a carpet stain within the first six months of being there, and it's just not cleanable. Comes back every single time. So we will have a Saturday, rapid access will be working out of Peds. So they can go in and remove all the carpet in there. So improvements going on in our clinic.
And rapid access currently, is that appointment or walk-in?
It is walk-in only. So we are keeping it walk-in only. Saturdays, we have been doing some appointments for Peds follow-up just because we've had some short staff issues in Peds. Um, third next available for OB did increase a little bit this month. There is some vacation time. So as Jesse talked about how we really schedule, OB-HG providers, they get a lot of the GYN work because we're trying to fill surgical cases. So Dr. Waganek sees a good portion of OB patients. Anna also mixes OB and well-on exam. So when he takes some time off, it's hard to get in those OBs. So our nurses are doing that first visit just to get a good history and then that helps them triage and figure out how quickly do, do we have to get that patient in for their first physician visit? Any questions?
Other workplace health, um, about CW asking the clinic to do their four cause testing, is that so what is four cause testing? It could be.
Four causes, I think someone's doing booze or alcohol
Okay.
at work and I'd like to have them tested. So they haven't utilized us in any capacity before. So we're really excited about the opportunity for that relationship and they've already had one employee they had to bring in for testing. Our long-term goal will be to work with them to do all of it.
Four causes, I'm assuming that's when they are working through like a termination for cause or.
Termination for cause, or there was an accident at work and they just need, we offer breath alcohol testing, urine drug screen testing, and blood drug screen.
I'd note on rapid access, I'll talk about the board. But we do anticipate having, well, we're working hard to fill the schedule of rapid access, so um, uh, a couple of months ago, we approved to, and it upstuffed to our third ABC to work in that clinic because we were, we only had two and one went out. We don't have much to fill those gaps. Um, so the moment we posted for a third, one of ours gave notice, um, she, she lives in Wenatchee and she's, used to meet a little bit less for, for family personal reasons. Uh, so we are working hard to fill all those gaps, so I commend our prior staff leadership and Stacy's leadership to, to try to juggle, struggle to keep that filled over the next few months as we recruit new ones.
Does that mean we're, we'll be or are or will be down to two and then recruiting for two?
We will be down to one.
Oh.
And.
Oh, sorry.
We opened the third to get some insulation. Moment we opened that third one, the, the one went down. So I check in with Janine about every day.
One offer.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So far, our clinicians are jumping in and fills a lot of shifts. So I'd call out Dr. Frick and Workplace Health, he he's taken a lot of those shifts.
Anything else for us?
No.
All right, we're moving on to medical staff. Uh, Dr. Hoppy, Chief of Staff, are you available?
Uh, yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great, great. Um, all right, my, uh, good evening. My report is on, starts on page thirty-four. Um, and first, you can take a look at the credential files that the Medical Executive Committee, uh, reviewed uh, and signed off on. There were, I think, seven initial appointments and twelve reappointments. Uh, and the second item for business that, um, we need to review, the Medical Executive Committee again reviewed the delineation of privileges for the, a new set that we've created for, uh, neuro, uh, musculoskeletal medicine and osteopathic manipulative medicine. And, uh, we looked at these credentials uh, cause some of our providers are gonna be providing that type of care. So, um, we were able to review that and draft up a, a new, uh, delineation of privileges for them. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
And so for the delineation of privileges, will you want a motion for that when we get to it?
Yes, please.
Excellent, all right. So, uh, anything else before we go to our motions, Dr. Hoppy?
Uh, no, I, I think that's it for now.
Okay. If we're to have an opportunity to review the credential files, when ready, I would entertain a motion for, uh, approval.
Certainly.
By Erica? Second by Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor of, uh, approving the credential files? Say aye.
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 I too will vote aye. That motion passes. Uh, if you had a chance to look at the delineation of privileges that Dr. Hoppy was speaking of, uh, same thing, if, uh, when ready, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I just, I just have one quick thing to say about this. I, I sort of feel, I mean, I can understand, uh, when I review, you know, the credentials files, uh, I mean, I can understand what's going on there, you know, a number of procedures that have been performed. Uh, you know, any sort of malpractice planning and stuff like that. That all sort of makes sense to me. But I do have to say that when it comes to delineation of privileges, it's mostly just deferring to the physician leadership. I mean, and I'm on MAC, like, I don't, I couldn't tell if there's missing on this list or something that shouldn't be on this list. So I just, I mean, maybe this is unnecessary. And I know it has to be approved by the full board, but I should just sort of note that.
We're relying on the medical staff.
Relying on the medical staff, right.
Hell, it's necessary.
This is beyond my expertise, so, uh, you know, I, I mean, I just feel like I shouldn't mention, mention that, like, uh, I'm going to move to approve, uh, this, but, uh, it's not based on any sort of special expertise I have.
Second, right, so motion and second, and now it's discussion. So with the discussion, I'll say, uh, I'm on MAC also, but I do appreciate watching those with the expertise have the discussion and to suss out the things that are important to them. And so although we're not, uh, educated in that specifics, you can tell when people take it very seriously and bring a lot of thought to it. So I, I, I can speak for that appreciation. So thank you for
True.
how that, all that runs. And, uh, and again, at the end of the day, trust that this is important to the people with the expertise, so.
I'm inspired to Google all these techniques.
Yes.
Credit should also go to Janet Carlson and her team in the medical staff office.
Yeah.
Their network collaborative has contributed tremendously to the development of this document.
Excellent.
And later I will challenge Dr. Hoppy to say the title three times fast. That is about full. So we have a first, we have a second, we've had our discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor of, uh, approving the delineation of privileges, please say aye.
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 I too will vote aye. That motion passes. Uh, anything else for us, Dr. Hoppy?
Uh, no, uh, I don't think so. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you. And now we move on to Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Thomas.
Our report begins on page thirty-seven. I have, uh, no additions or amendments to make, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Thomas? I know we've touched on it a little bit throughout the night, but, um, the, the, the provider recruitment, are we feeling the easing of the dam a little bit? I mean, is it still just the hardest thing we have is to find people who are willing to come and live and commit to working here?
I, I think it's hard work and that, that continues to be the case, but I, I think we have new strategies that are already paying dividends. I think we have had, uh, success and, and currently we have a number of providers who are in the pipeline with hope to alleviate some of our, um, most difficult shortages. And, uh, we've grown programs almost, uh, by accident. In some cases, we've been very fortuitous to recruit some, some good talent who have themselves recruited in additional talent into the organization. So, uh, we continue to, to take advantage of every opportunity that comes along and in, uh, every way possible, we're trying new things and, and most of the time having great success with it.
And it feels like there's a little bit more stability in, I'll speak specifically for what we used to call internal medicine. Now, I think it's adult and internal. But, you know, a year or so ago, a lot of my neighbors used that and there was a lot of, my doctors changed again. I've not heard that for a while now. So hopefully that's a sign of something positive.
It's definitely an area, primary care a- as a, a broader, um, cross-section of our, our providers. It's an area that we intend to continue to invest in. Um, the long-term relationships that you have with primary care provider really are a, an important, uh, relationship for people to feel comfortable with the healthcare they're getting. But, uh, I think we've seen, uh, real transformation of the, uh, the team there at Adult and Internal Medicine, and they are, um, coming together, seeing more patients, uh, you know, creating more access. And we continue to grow that team on a regular basis. We've got a, a new addition that's in the pipeline there as well, so we're very excited about that group.
Excellent.
Yeah, a good comment. Anytime Kat texts me like, hey, got this one signed. I always have to resist or like, awesome, now how about, you know, the next one? Cause there's, it's a forever list. And I, I don't do that. I can't do that. It's huge. So there's
Every.
Many, yeah. Every one of them is a huge win in itself. It's not, okay, well, how about more? Cause there is always some more that we can always be doing. It'd be fun time. And some of the ways that we're trying to pivot to attract more talent, like I think I had started sharing, like in December, January is just like any education outreach, um, as far as even like our advertisements or pre-education things in the center of media. It used to not be a picture of our patients or our providers. So it's, you know, having that providers face in the community is a piece of retention. Well, we know that that's paying off this year, probably not, but it just takes a lot of time to invest in that. And, and it gives an opportunity to spotlight our staff and what they're doing. So I think it makes the work a little bit more fun and more, work more grounded to being a part of our community.
Could you speak a little bit about the timeline on the retirement, uh, Dr. Forsley and then transitioning to a new MPD part?
I'm not sure that I have specifics on the timeline of the transition, but I do know that the, uh, posting was released this last week. Um, there will be at least one applicant, uh, and I don't know whether that application has been completed at this point. Uh, but there's great enthusiasm that his successor is already in place.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Thomas? Anything else for us?
Nothing else, Dad.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, so we're moving on to, uh, Chief Finance, Jennifer.
Excuse me. My report starts on page thirty-nine and just a couple of things to call out. May closed, um, well over budget. With an operating margin of eight point two percent. And if we know, um, what Tom, uh, Maton was telling us earlier, then that's pretty good. Our net income year-to-date is four point one million dollars and cash on hand. Still really good, even with seven million dollars of spending on capital this year to date. We'll point out the June, looks a little bit slower, but I anticipate it to come in about six or seven percent under budget. So, but still strong year-to-date.
And is some of that related to, uh, providers being out and, and being able to see less people or there? And we can wait to talk about it next month, but.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, it were just slower than customers. Less, less clinic visits, less ancillary, a couple less, less surgeries.
Beginning of summer before people start to get hurt.
Yeah.
Um, just a couple of other things, um, volume gaps, um, putting specifically, um, against budget, but really is over year, over year, so when I call out, putting down, that's, that's just to budget. Uh, same thing with surgeries, but I don't have a plan to bring those. New surgery suite on. And two quick call-outs that I wanted to talk about, the clean audit, um, and James and his team are just fantastic, and there's, they're just, they're just worker bees, they're just work, 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 so that's wonderful, and, um, the G P O transition is coming, uh, October first, and we have some, um, the good estimated savings there of about seven hundred thousand dollars, we hope to see. And that's really all I have unless there are questions for me.
Does anyone have any questions for Jennifer?
Make a comment that we do have a R F P out for, uh, courier services. We'll be looking to see what the results of that, that are. As we've expanded, we need to explore all options to, to serve the community the best way we can without some customers. Due to a lot of courier services, it's kind of a strategy, you can sprinkle through all the town. Some of the stuff.
Any other questions for Jennifer on the finance side of things? Thank you for your point. All right, moving on to, uh, Community Relations, Chief Public Relations Officer, Michelle.
No, Michelle is in Mecca, so I'm happy to call her and report. You know, I offered, and I know the people going out of the country too, offered they can still join the board meetings, but not making eye contact. Just kidding. Uh, yeah, if you have any questions, happy to talk about it, but they are just highly focused on communication to the public about the levy and all the different strategies and tactics for us to get that out, out of the community.
Okay, any questions about Michelle's report? All right. So, um, we're going to move on to the next section, and, um, normally we take a little break, but I think, um, since we're going to be providing some information, uh, we'll just wait and take our natural break before executive session. So, uh, Education Board Reports. We just got back from the Wisha Conference, uh, the five commissioners. And, um, Jason, and I just was hoping each person could spend a moment highlighting some takeaways from it. Uh, so that people can kind of see what we experienced and, and how we hear it and how maybe it will influence us as a board and things we try to do in the future, so. Um, we'll just kind of go in order here. Bob, are you willing to do?
Yeah, I, um, one of the better scene up there in Chilean and I think I've been like four or five times. Uh, but I, I enjoyed the, you know, the state's doing, making some decisions that is going to greatly impact rural health in the future and and try, they tried to present that, but yet not be super negative about it. Which is kind of hard to do, and, um, it, it's a little scary when you, you know, they'll look at funding sources and how they want to, you know, do, work more with grants and, um, thing, different things and such, but I felt like the, the Hospital Association has a good, um, thumb on the pulse of what's really going on, um, in Olympia and, and it's got the best interest and, uh, for rural health and, uh, people who are, have been there for a while that can help us out when these difficult things come down the pike and that we've got some political folks that are on our side, you know, so Ken Schreier is pretty much, uh, favorite of rural health and things like that, so, yeah, I, I really enjoyed that part.
Matt, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll do it really quickly, uh, just to piggyback on, on what Bob said, they give us, gave us a really good picture of what's happening at both the state and federal levels. Sounds like if, uh, these cuts to Medicaid come down the pike, there's going to be some sort of fund for rural healthcare systems that will require you making a case for this kind of reimbursement. Wish is not too crazy about that because it will be a lot more administrative burden to get money that now comes just automatically. Um, so that's first thing. Second thing, I think, uh, there are a lot of good questions we can ask, and, uh, Jeff, you don't have to say anything at this point, but a good question's around cyber risk management. So we've, uh, uh, there was a really good presentation of that, some questions we need to eventually, uh, ask Jeff to address some of that stuff. And then the third thing was just the thing I mentioned earlier, um, the focus on quality. Um, and the way some organizations kind of address that in their meetings, I thought was really interesting. And so I have some things that I'll discuss, uh, with Manny at some point. Um, I do, I did take notes and, uh, once, uh, the PowerPoints come out, which I think they said would come out in about a week, I'll be happy to share that with anyone, uh, I'll send it to the whole team in case you're interested. But, uh, yeah, I, I agree with Bob, it was really valuable, uh, valuable meeting.
Thank you. So Terry, um, your takeaways from the conference, not the governance part, but the actual conference, what were your takeaways from the various, events that you attended and saw and listened to?
Well, safety and quality is a hundred percent what boards must do, and safety took a hit during the pandemic. And several hospitals have not recovered from, from that, uh, change. And they're not all the public hospital districts. Uh, but I, uh, uh, feel very good that we have recovered because I was on the Quality Improvement Committee, and we all have discussed what was going on for our safety and quality. Uh, can I discuss the, uh, a couple of things on the, uh, governance?
That's a separate item. We'll do right when we're done with this, then we'll go to you because you're going to attend that one, you'll give us feedback.
Okay, I'll keep my mouth shut, even though I'm smiling.
Excellent. Erica, what were your takeaways?
Yeah, uh, there, uh, I, I echo Bob's sentiment. I thought this was the best conference, actually a conference that I've been to, I just thought that every session was entirely relevant and well put together. Um, with real takeaways that are actionable. Um, some of the ones that I thought were very, at least interesting, if, if not relevant to us, there was one on creative funding and uh, this was a different way to go about it, but it was Josh Martin from Summit Pacific, he talked about his experience in, um, securing funding through U S D alone for for their system and the falls they experienced, and, um, he was very candid about it, it was, and, and how he I, it kind of went sideways for a little bit and COVID made them look like they were doing way better, you know, COVID money than they actually were, and I guess U S D A said pay us now, and he was like, wait a minute, this is just a play. Anyhow, he did some advocacy and requests with his elected officials, think about them, invited on that, and was a really great story, then it was followed with some very detailed granular information about, um, economic indicators and such that I struggled to keep on top of, but people like John probably had no trouble.
It was exciting, yeah.
Yeah.
It was just spreadsheets of numbers, I mean, it's, I think put the audience to sleep.
She did apologize right after the game. But this is how we, this is the world we operate in, so, uh, yeah. And then, uh, there was an optional lunch session, and I had intended on going out and getting some fresh air, but this gentleman here, he seemed like a boss, boss, he captivated me. This was about just F O P M A guidance, um, pitfalls, some, some, some pitfalls that, uh, districts might encounter, just some tricky situations. Uh, my takeaway from that is that we are doing the right things. Um, all, nothing he said on how to handle it was a surprise because that's just our culture, it's what we do, we we follow the law and we, we make sure to stay ahead of that, so that was really affirming. And then, um, the one-two punch, the state and federal budget and policy, I noticed they didn't put tissues out on the table for the, they could have put tissues out. Given us a supportive puppy for that, I don't know, it was a lot of, every slide was, this is how much the states, you know, hospitals in the states stand to lose if this or that, and it was hundreds of millions, and then the next slide was a new hundreds of millions, and it and, I don't know, they said something, they pulled a joke afterwards to lighten the mood. It was, it was a rough session, but it was good to get that one away and move on to some other stuff, but, um, overall, really, really great conference, um, thought that it was time well spent. Weather was.
Wasn't too hot, wasn't too cold.
Yeah.
That was good. Uh, so from my perspective, um, on what Erica was just saying, it was interesting because back in D C, they're currently writing the legislation that they're trying to pass, and it's changing constantly and and the Hospital Association seems to have some, um, intel going on, and they're getting copies of this as it's being written. And so I know one morning she read us the, the newest one, which, again, I think it tied into what, what Matt was talking about, about you, you know, possibly turning this into grants, where you have to have now a whole team applying for money that currently just naturally flows because we're, we're giving services, so things like that. So, um, other things I thought was interesting, they had a breakout session, and one of them was about the CEO succession plan for somebody, Jason headed off somewhere else.
The whole board stayed.
So, they said, they said, just imagine, if you're CEO, even though he or she is terrific, what if they win the lottery? And they decide, I'm done being employed, and off they go, so, um, it was it was, it was, again, great to, to get people to think even, and, and the other thing is, it was, um, I got a, a chance to go to the CEO and the, the board chair lunch. And I was really surprised, there are a lot of young CEOs out in the, in Washington State, and it was great to meet some of them and hear their stories and be able to share Jason's story and whatnot, so that was very informative, and I, I really enjoyed that from the sense it, it felt a little more intimate, and people really shared some useful stories of what their hospitals experience, challenges, how they're handling those challenges, and it gave us some good ideas that, you know, we encounter things, some different strategies we can do, and some people we can reach out to have had the experience and that sort of thing, and I think you have enjoyed getting to know some of the other CEOs, and, and they've known you as CFO, and so it's great to see you in this role, and we're able to, uh, I think, um, let people know how excited we were to see Jason transition into this role and that, um, it's going quite well for us, and, and the feedback I get from senior leadership is from their perspective. It's, it was a good choice, and I think we're able to convey that in this sort of, uh, meeting. As talked about earlier, um, again, A I is something I'm very interested in, uh, I know some of the group here is going next month to Tennessee to the National Convention, and I know they have numerous sessions in A I there, so I hope somebody's able to bring back the current thought from the hospital world as, as to that, but in this one, they had one session on it. One of the slides was approximately thirty-five percent of hospitals are integrating A I actively into the process. And, and it's not really, it's not to remove people, make what the people do more efficient. And one of the things that was pointed out is insurance companies are using it to create denials. So maybe we need to think about using it to create submissions. And again, you're not necessarily write it for you, but look for the mistakes that the A I and the others, it's, it's like a chess match, they're using, so, again, it's just something I think we need to think about and make sure that, that we're, we're arming ourselves equally with what the, the other side is doing, so I, I think in the next year or two, it's just imperative, we at least understand it, even if we decide not to use it. We don't want to be left out.
They're, they're all giggling because we're working on refreshing our strategies, uh, imperatives over the next, for the next coming refresh of it, and, and one of them is, and the digital transformation and digital, um, A I, cyber, everything is integrated into every, yeah, of our.
Good.
pillars.
Good, yeah, because the world's definitely going in that direction, so, um, we've already talked about the cyber, it's just, uh, it's imperative that, uh, we provide E T, uh, I T with the resources needed to to, to not be the weakest link, you know, it's, it, we just need to make it as hard as possible for somebody to compromise us because it is so crushing if they succeed. So, uh, and again, it was exciting, I know last year, uh, we had a team here, met with Jeff's team and, and, uh, and it gives us a lot of confidence that Jeff runs a very solid team, especially when you think of a hospital this size. We, we've so outclassed, uh, with what we're able to do with the resources we have, so, you know, Jeff, kudos to you and your team for what you do on that side of things.
He did a thumbs up.
Oh, good, thank you. Um, but they also said, the other thing is, it's, it's no longer some kid in a basement, it is nation-states. It is a way they generate revenue.
They have H R departments and
Yeah, yeah.
like policies and P T O and such.
Yeah, cyber criminals run it like corporations.
They will call patients and say, we have your information, you need to contact your hospital to tell them to pay the ransom.
Yeah, they try to put pressure, if you're resisting paying a ransom, if you've been hacked.
Nasty.
Yeah, so, um.
One of the top or figures was down at the Hatfield at Golden Dale Hospital, they were cyber attacked in March. And, yeah, when their system got locked down, the cyber attackers were calling patients, saying, we have all your information, all the hospital stuff, call your hospital administrators and demand them to pay us X, Y, Z. There is, it's happening around us as well.
I think he talked about going without email for like twenty-one days or something, and, and again, we had a little bit taste of that when, uh, we had to deal with other company, national company got hacked and, and, um, we had to do a lot of things by paper that we've not done that way in a while, so it's just it's so crushing when it happens. Uh, there's a session on foundation synergy, and again, I think we do a pretty good job at this hospital of working with the foundation, um. Board meetings, uh, there was some interesting stuff about board meetings, and I think a lot of us are, are trying to think of ways to, to do it, a little bit like falls is an example, like you did the narrative on falls, and they said, really, push for narrative, don't just look at statistics, try to learn the story because that often leads to, how did that story change what the organization does so it doesn't repeat again as much as possible? What can we learn from it, so to speak? So there's a lot of thought of that, and some other stuff we've talked about earlier this year is as a board, we need to push ourselves to not just listen to reports, but also get into it where we have time to talk strategy and future, because our job at the end of the day is, what is this organization going to be doing a year from now, three years from now, and obviously the strategic plan we're doing leads to some of that. But there are other things that we need to make sure we're taking the opportunity to think about, ponder, and, uh, begin the process of maybe implementing some of it and so forth, so we need to make sure we're doing our best there. And then on the strategic plan, Jason and I had, he brought some ideas to me, and I think we'll look to maybe implement that in the next round of the strategic plan. Um, I don't want to steal any thunder there, but, uh, again, this, how can we learn what other people are doing effectively? They can make what we're doing a little bit better, and so I'm excited to kind of see where some of those discussions lead and stuff. So, those are some of my big broad stroke takeaways. As has been said, it was one of, it's the rare conference where you come away, you felt like every session, I got a little something out of. And the food wasn't terrible.
Breakout sessions where you're like, ooh, I'm actually, it's an opportunity cost, because I would love to go to bowl, but I'm glad we.
We ended up studying pretty good, I think, for the breakout session, and so we can bring back the, the knowledge and stuff. Um, so I went first because I worried you were going to steal all my thoughts, but if you want to share.
What they said.
Food was good, Erica took all the brisket, and she got the last dessert, but that's me. It was really reaffirming, just proud of, makes me even further proud of working for K V H in, in this community. Very affirming the things we're doing, uh, the things they talk about with committee attendance that the board attends and committees attendance of the board and administrators don't attend, such as peer review, you know, it allows, nobody attends peer review, it allows them to go a lot deeper, so it's just really reaffirming a lot of the things that we're already doing. Um, it affirmed the struggle, you know, healthcare across the industry is huge, and that's not, um, that's also happening at K V H as well, but it's nice to have all these partners and to, uh, collaborate with the other uh, CEOs, CFOs, um, A W P H D, and Wisha and other board members. Uh, biggest struggle is just human capital and financial capital across the board, so need the finances for the human piece and need to be able to attract employees to a very, very difficult industry. I don't think people work in healthcare just because it's so fun to work in, it's a reward that you get out of that, so it's that it's a calling and a reward that you get out of, I think, working in healthcare and caring for your community. And then again, yeah, the meeting that we attended with the, is just a CEO, board chair one, so that just again helps further develop those relationships as, as I navigate my role over the couple of years. Board chair will rotate through, I won't. my role over the years, board chair will rotate through, I will rotate through, um, and that relationship and. But overall, really good comforts.
Well, I think, you know, one of the big takeaways is as many challenges as we have in this organization, almost every other public hospital in this state would change places with us if they could. We are financially strong. We're doing innovative things way above what we should be doing at a critical access, uh, level and stuff. So I think I, I always feel very proud when we're able to share with other groups what we're doing and what we're able to do. So that's because everyone here works so hard.
Echo that, just that really deep sense of pride being or representing the organization. I mean, the pride is not my own pride, but pride over whatever anybody in this organization has turned it into and what we are bringing it into. It's just, it's.
Yeah. And like your inspection that, that's going on and that you kind of welcome it at this point, like we're ready to show off. So. So thank you everyone for enduring our notes and, and what you do here in the facility. So. So is there anything else on this? Uh, so, um, we're going to, uh, Terry on his own, he's part of the governance committee and he got to go to a special meeting that only he knows the secrets of. And I'd asked him to share a few of those secrets with, uh, the group tonight. So we can understand what they learned in his special meeting.
Okay. So I've been on the governance committee for several years. And there's about twenty commissioners and two C EOs that are on the committee. And, uh, uh, a lot of them, uh, are in person and you can also do the Zoom committee. So it's almost like what we're having here today. And then the original, uh, start of that was twenty twenty-five board role, uh, is safety, quality and satisfaction. That's what we were talking about in the governance committee. And then they had, uh, uh, fee prime, uh, uh, premium dashboards they talked about. But, uh, we aren't getting those anymore because we don't have a subscription to them. But if, uh, Jason wanted to, uh, subscribe to get those, uh, it would be all right. So I'm just going to tell you what the three dashboards were. The first one was operation efficiency dashboard. This is the explore relationship between case mix index and lengths. Or stay by comparing hospitals against one another. That's what that one was. The next one was provider supply and procedure demand dashboard. Use this dashboard to determine the, the demand for procedures and, and supply and providers within your hospital or facility services area, explore potential opportunities for more informed services and line offering. And then the last dashboard that we talked was forecasting dashboard. This tool provides valid insights into monthly claim volumes, enabling you to analyze historical trends and forecast future claim volumes and precisions. So those were the three dashboards. But then again, if, uh, Jason wants to have those dashboards a hundred percent, uh, available, uh, even though we are a, a, a member of WISHA, uh, he could, uh, uh, subscribe to those and we get them. And those, uh, three dashboards, they published them two months ago. And if we would have had to have a subscription to them, we would have had them two months ago and.
Can you share with, what was your personal takeaway from the meeting? What did you learn that you thought this is something we can implement at our facility?
Well, the, the biggest thing I learned about that meeting is the role of the board that we need to make, uh, uh, work on safety, quality and satisfaction. And a lot of those, uh, dashboards that I, I, I read about, that's what.
Are, are you saying we need to work on because we're not doing it well right now?
No, I'm just saying that's what the governor's committee was talking about. Uh, but there was, uh, a, a couple, uh, commissioners that were talking about the problems they were having. And then, uh, uh, one CEO also talked about uh, the problems they were having on the safety, quality and satisfaction. Because that's what the board does, because we're a public hospital district and we need to make sure that our, our, our area around here is a hundred percent, uh, quality, safety and satisfaction because, uh, uh, our, uh, the people in this district are a hundred percent overseeing, uh, some of this stuff that the hospital does.
Anything else for me?
I don't think so. Does anybody have a question at all?
It's a subscription to, it's called Dash or Dash Premium, which is some state data that we could get access to, but we do have.
We already did to Dash, yeah.
Yeah, we, but, uh, they sent me an email that said that, uh, we don't have a prescription for the premium dash. Uh, we just must be getting the regular dash.
There's plenty of data in there without the premium.
Well, that's what they, they, that's what they were talking about, uh, at the governance board. They were talking about the premium dash. So anyway, uh, the premium dash is I think something that they really do.
A-anything else of importance you want to share with the board?
Uh, well, the only thing I was talking about, one of the things we talked about, this was at the end of the governance meeting, we talked about safety and quality outline review. And they just talked about the safety and quality, uh, that, uh, needs to be, uh, taken care of by the committee. But that was it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to take up too much time for all you guys this evening.
So it is seven sixteen. Uh, we're going to go into executive session next. Why don't we do that starting at seven twenty? Uh, how long do we need for executive session?
Let's say twenty-five minutes.
Twenty-five total for the two, or you just have, uh, we're doing real estate. So we will, uh, so twenty-five minutes. So reconvene at seven forty-five. So, uh, we are, uh, then we'll take a break here for a couple of minutes, reconvene seven twenty, twenty-five minute executive session. We'll be talking about real estate. No decisions will be made, uh, during executive session. Will we have anything required? We come out of executive. Okay. The no vote should be taken and no decisions, but we'll, uh, reconvene in the public session before we adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, just Jennifer. Giving us why it matters to you rather than.
Florida.